Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this special council meeting for review of the budget. Our first, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and our first item is public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item, and as always, we ask that you be civil and concise. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Volz?
Good morning, Council. For the record, Fred Volz. It's important when spending other people's money to respect it as though it was one's own. This proposed budget fails to adequately fund known necessary expenses such as spay neuter and trap neuter release at the animal shelter, properly equipping canine police dogs, and fixes to the chronically failing city phone system and computer servers while promoting many unnecessary initiatives and expenditures. The current city manager proposal has no line item explanatory footnotes on page after page of numbers with large increases and fails to properly identify cash versus in-kind services given to various organizations. Looking ahead, 7.6% increases year over year are unsustainable when new revenue sources fail to keep up with excessive new spending. We need zero-based budgeting rather than presuming last year's expenses should continue with increases. Last week's supposed budget, public budget workshop was an unmitigated travesty. While council chambers had been reserved for two and a half hours, the city manager's budget person adjourned the meeting under one hour, suddenly claiming another meeting. Most of the time was consumed by her very disjointed overview presentation that jumped around the printed summary documents. As she hastily departed, she was questioned about the truncated meeting and had no response. When asked about where unanswered questions could be directed, she had no contact person to suggest other than submitting a FOIA request. We still have no clarity about over $20 million of unspent utility capital improvement projects from the past on a project-by-project basis. New appropriations that can't be fully spent in the upcoming fiscal year are being requested. We have no reliable, accurate, and consolidated management tracking tool of total money spent in the past or to be spent in the future on active projects, and have been told city management simply wants to forget the past and start tracking money going forward. This approach is absurd. The monies budgeted for depreciation allegedly excluded from the rate consultant's calculations, yet reflected in the income and expense summaries, have been described as a non-cash expense. But there is supposedly some sort of cumulative depreciation fund that can be used for utility capital projects without any breakout by year of the monies reserved or outline of how or when they will be spent. There's been no pruning by the city manager of the completely unaffordable $227 million of capital projects he has proposed for future years compared against a mere $38 million of proposed annual general fund spending. Despite meeting the NRS 354.517 definition for enterprise funds, the two municipal golf courses have not been so defined. Why hasn't this overdue and statutorily required recategorization been initiated by the city manager? The City Hall administrative overhead calculation formula for utilities in the airport has not been revealed. We see summary numbers only. Despite significant City Hall staff time spent on hangar leases, hiring a new airport manager, contracts, and managing multiple public works projects, the airport has been slated to receive only $13,500 of fiscal year 2021 administrative overhead expense. Here are some reduction suggestions for your consideration. Hopefully, more will be generated during today's deliberations. Eliminate the communications department and save almost $200,000. Cut the City Hall renovation budget by at least $600,000 and focus only on overdue ADA essentials. Delete $50,000 of cemetery improvements and explore its sale. Reduce fire department overtime increases of over $71,000. Do not construct pickleball courts at the golf courses. Reduce outside police details that are increasing by over $200,000. Reduce the city attorney's professional fee increase of over $100,000. Close the city fitness center at ABC Park and save $40,000 subsidies. Charge takeoff and landing fees at the airport. Cut the city lobbyist for $100,000 and use the city and county association services. Delete skate park laying for $45,000. And finally, delete the Boulder Creek sand bin for $100,000. And I would ask that these comments be added to the record verbatim. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, seeing no others, we'll close public comment and move to our first agenda item for possible action. Presentation, discussion fiscal year 2020 to 2021, general fund and other governmental fund changes. Ms. Mannheim?
Hi. Angela Mannenin, the budget manager. We did just meet on the 12th of February, so there hasn't been a lot of changes in the budget since then. Oops. Okay. So since we met in February 12th, the general fund total expenditures have reduced about $74,000 of this. Actually, the city council budget reduced about $3,000 in the salary line. Also, the general fund contributions to the special project fund reduced $90,000. The special projects fund is the fund where the capital improvement projects are located. So the reason for this reduction is their Muni Golf Course clubhouse renovation of $150,000 was moved out to fiscal year 2025, and also the rec center flat roof repair of $60,000 was on the capital improvement project list presented in February, and it still is. It's just the funding source is going to come from the general fund rather than the extraordinary repairs and expense fund. So 150 minus 60 is the $90,000 reduction. Also, we have a reduction in the fire budget of about $4,600, and to discuss that is Chief Gray.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Will Gray with the Fire Department. Basically, our main changes this year, when I came on, there was two funded unfilled captains positions. The last administration had chosen to take administrative staff and put them all as extra captains on the floor. There was a report that was done by management partners that evaluated the fire department structure. I read that, I agreed with that, and the report basically said that it needed to be returned the way it was. So the number two would be the deputy chief. It used to be called a division chief. We just wanted to align the names with the region, and then the fire analyst position would be put back in there to help manage some of that. So, if there are any questions on it? We were able to do that without raising the budget, so we were able to remove some of our temporary costs for our reserves, because right now our reserve program is pretty depleted, and offset that, so that's actually a revenue-neutral move there.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
And now I'd also like to turn it over to Michael Mays to discuss community development.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Michael Mays, your community development director. Wanted to highlight a request by the Historic Preservation Committee. They would like to expand the number of awards, potential awards, that come before the council on an annual basis in conjunction with Historic Preservation Day. Currently, there is one award granted each year. They'd like to consider granting up to two awards, looking at both commercial properties and residential properties. In addition to that, they are looking to also provide a sculpture of the home as an acknowledgement of the award in conjunction with the plaque that's currently provided to the property that's selected. And the estimate additional cost would be $700 for that expansion in the award program. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Councilwoman Foldon?
Thank you. So is this just the same award, the preservation award, that they're already giving out, or is this would be a different, they're just doing it twice a year instead of once, or is it a different award?
No, they would, it's the same award. They would award, provide up to two awards within that same process. One would be potentially residential properties and another classification for commercial properties.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, a memento sculpture that would be provided to the recipient.
Okay. Thank you.
The award that's currently in place, that is eligible for any building within the historic district, is that correct?
That is correct.
Whether commercial or residential?
Based on nominations, yes.
Do we know how many structures there are? Well, I shouldn't say structures, but businesses or homes? The reason I say I don't want to use the word structures is I know that some count garages, pertinent structures, things like that is also in that total.
Yeah, I know we have over 500 properties within the historic district.
Okay. You know, I'm just a little hesitant to, we give an award each year. Commercial or residential is eligible for that. I don't know that we have a need for it. We've already awarded maybe a dozen of these in the past. Eventually, we'll run out of buildings, so I mean, we could just do a one-time expense and give everybody an award, but yeah, I'm just, you know, I think we're pretty good right now by recognizing an outstanding structure each year. You know, the construction of this model, that would be given to whoever was selected for the award, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. Well, it's not a lot of money, I'm just not sure with the efficacy of it. I would kind of like to wait and see until we have our historic plan in place that's due to get underway soon, as I recall.
Yes, in fact, we've got the kickoff meeting this Thursday.
Okay. Now, maybe we should wait for that to be done before we look at expanding this program further, and any other questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I kind, I see both sides, right? I agree that, you know, it's, it's nice, it sounds like a really wonderful idea. I think, you know, the idea of a small model is really cool and might be meaningful for people who really participate in this, and I think we do want to reward, we do want to have a sense of reward for people participating in this. However, at the same time, it's, you know, it is still, you know, as he said, we only have so many buildings in here, and we only have so many, it's, yeah, it's not a lot of money, I just, I understand the issue and agree. If we are moving forward with our historic preservation plan, and that might be a better way to identify, it's not that I don't think it's a great idea, because we do want to make sure people want to participate in these programs, but it might just be a little, having a commercial and a residential, you know, it, there's only so many commercials, but how many commercial properties are there in the historic district? I mean, it seems like once you get through that, you're almost done, you know, unless you're going to continue to award the same one for the same building for keeping it up. So I'm just a little, again, it's not that, it's not that much money, so it's, for me, it's, I don't think it would be a problem, but you know, I guess I could go either way.
Well, once everybody has an award, maybe we could come up with like an oak leaf cluster or something that would be awarded afterwards. Again, I think we're just better off waiting until the plan is in place, and you know, certainly I think there are things that we can do for property owners within the historic district. I'm just not sure that this is the one that's going to turn the tide on preservation efforts. So again, I think as we work through that process on the historic plan, we may come up with things that will be of much more interest to property owners.
I did have one question. Is the majority of that money the increase for the model itself?
The estimates for the creation of the model will vary depending on the building that's being replicated, but I believe the estimate was approximately around $150 to $200 for the model. So that is a combination of the estimate for potentially two models and two plaques. The plaques are around $100.
I mean, I would be interested in adding, keeping the model, but not necessarily going up to two. That would be my benefit. I think the model is a neat thing, that it's a way to, you can also use it to promote the efforts, use the model as a way to show, you know, here's what we're doing. I think it's, that that might be a good balance.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Okay. So a few more requests since our last meeting. Finance is requesting about $9,500 for software for a budget book. The city hasn't created a budget book since 2015. It would be kind of like the CAFER, but for the budget. It would just summarize our budget and make it in layman's terms, so it's easier for the public to review and understand, hopefully. And then also, Finance is also requesting money, it's $14,000 for CAFER software for Munis. It's in the IT budget, because our Munis contract is in the IT budget. It'd be $8,000 a year and the $6,000 in implementation costs. And doing our CAFER in-house would not mean we would audit ourselves, we would just do the work for the CAFER, the auditors would still review our CAFER and approve it, it would just, in the future, possibly reduce our audit costs. And then also, just to be more transparent, show how much actual departments cost, we did make another transfer out of the city manager's budget to Communications at BCTV, and it's just their phone usage now that we have different phone contracts, we're able to track these things clear. Okay. And so, other changes to other funds of our governmental funds. The special projects funds actually reduced $290,000. So 98,000 of it is that general fund reduction, which is the $150,000 golf course project that got moved out to 2025, and also the $60,000 roof repair that is kind of now coming from the general fund rather than extraordinary repairs and expense fund. And then also, there's a $200,000 RDA project for beautification for the BC Parkway, so it's what the RTC doesn't cover, such as benches and things like that, that instead of moving to the special projects fund, we're going to keep it in the RDA fund, so at the end of that project, we wouldn't have to move any remainder money back to the RDA, it'll just stay there. Another increase is the, that actual project is going to include shelters, which Michael will talk about here in a second, so that project increased $100,000, so that project is now $300,000. And so, here's Michael again to discuss that change.
In addition to the change, I also wanted to briefly highlight the RDA budget for fiscal year 21. So, consistent with last year's budget, we are continuing to propose $180,000 that would be utilized for grants, reinvestment grants. These are the grants that have the guidelines that are already in place that encourage reinvestment in the RDA district. In addition to that, we would continue with fiscal year 21 with $100,000 for the historic preservation grant, of which the council has recently approved the guidelines for that grant program, which provides for up to 50% reimbursement for eligible costs. As Angela mentioned, there is $200,000 identified for the Boulder City Parkway improvements that are not eligible for RTC funding. And in addition, in compliance with state statute, RDAs within Nevada should implement a small business loan program. And so, to be in compliance with NRS, we're proposing a $5,000 pilot program similar to the historic preservation grants, grant. Guidelines would be brought forward to the RDA for consideration and review before implementation of this pilot program. And so, has not been developed yet, but that would be forthcoming within fiscal year 21. And as Angela also mentioned, in line with the city's efforts through the adoption of the River Mountains Loop Trail extension and the state railroad museum, future expansion improvements, there's been a goal to bring people who are using the River Mountain Loop Trail into Boulder City to be able to take advantage of the local shopping and to see the historical significance of our community. And so, the proposed addition for your considerations, an additional $100,000, which would allow the city to augment $100,000 grant that the EVC, which is an arm of the Boulder City Chamber of Commerce, in which they've received for trail improvements. This would be a trailhead on the River Mountains Loop Trail that would include interpretive signage, promotion of our historic district, and help to guide people into the community and the railroad museum. As you can see with the exhibit, this $100,000 would help with the creation of this shelter at the trailhead, as well as similar shelters that would be along Boulder City Parkway, linking the River Mountains Loop Trail to the railroad museum, to Boulder City Parkway, and into downtown. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Where exactly is that located?
This would be at the end of Veterans Drive. So approximately about 100 feet from Veterans Drive is the River Mountains Loop Trail. When we were working with the community in the region on the River Mountains Loop Trail extension, one of the things that were identified is that there are people that use that trail that come from the region or beyond, and as they're on the trail, they're unaware of the opportunities that exist within Boulder City. And the River Mountain Loop Trail is a 34-mile trail that loops around, connects to Lake Mead and into Henderson. So this trailhead is an opportunity to redirect people from the trail into the community.
So you're talking about an area that would be north or northwest of the Veterans Home?
It would be directly west.
Okay. You know, my concern is, how far do we start developing out in our open space? The trail's already there at this time, and the money, I believe, has already been made available to extend that trail across the railroad tracks and connect it with some type of trail system coming into town, is that correct?
No, that's something that the EVC has been working on, looking for funds for that trail connection. What this provides is for the trailhead, and they did receive a $100,000 grant, but it's not enough to pay for all the improvements at the trailhead. And that's where the RDA funds could help augment that for the shelter. This would include, in addition to the interpretive signs, bike racks, a water fountain, and a short extension that would bring people to Veterans Drive, so that that could lead people in to the community and to the work that we're doing with the Complete Streets Project on Boulder City Parkway.
Okay. So at this time, there is no connection from River Mountain Loop Trail to any streets or existing roadways, sidewalks, other trails coming into the city?
There's a dirt path, so this would elevate, highlight the linkage as a trailhead and provide direction into the community currently through Veterans Drive. It's envisioned, long-term, that there would be a separate dedicated trail that would lead into the Nevada Railroad Museum, Millennial Park, and then eventually into the downtown. But this would provide a linkage now versus later. And again, the $100,000 grant has been awarded, and the EVC is moving forward with the trailhead. This will help to augment that, to provide additional improvements.
Okay. And that work that the EVC is doing was approved by city council at what time?
That is a separate grant that the EVC has undertaken. It wasn't before the council for those improvements.
Well, I mean, as far as actually doing the work?
Actually doing the work would be in coordination with community development public work staff. One of the things that the city council did review as part of the River Mountains Loop Trail study that did come before the council for consideration is these types of trailhead improvements to help bring people into the community.
I get a little concerned when we have non-governmental bodies making decisions. I understand that things like that have been discussed in the past, but when we talk about the EVC, I mean, that's not part of Boulder City government, right? That's a creation of Chamber of Commerce, and for them to come in and say, well, here's the project we're going to do, I get a little nervous about that.
And certainly, Mayor, I understand the concern, and that's why it does tie in to the approved River Mountains Loop Trail plan. This was a study for the newer members of the council. The city received through a grant with the RTC, a study that was conducted over a year process where citizens were engaged, as well as people who utilize the River Mountain Loop's trail on ways to improve connectivity between that existing trail and Boulder City. And so, it provided alternative methods for the connection between the two, and so this trailhead was one of the concepts identified within that study.
Okay, and I understand that, you know, connecting trail systems, but not creating structures out there in open space. So that's where my nervousness comes in, talking about a trail system versus erecting structures out in open space. You had mentioned that there would be a drinking fountain there. Is there infrastructure already in that area?
Yes.
And how is that there? I mean, what, how did the utilities come to be there for that to be available?
I'll turn it over to our public works director.
There's an existing water line running east-west on that Veterans Drive, is that, on Veterans Drive? I believe that's the connection that runs south down to the solar plants.
Oh, so the two and a half million dollar pipeline will have at least some use, correct?
No, this is the existing one, the previously existing one.
Oh. So we still don't have a use for the other one yet? Okay. Again, the other amounts that you've listed in there, the $100,000 within the RDA, that's not new money or money that is coming from elsewhere. Those are RDA funds that are generated on an annual basis, established by the RDA program itself. All we're doing is reserving money within that fund for an additional match for businesses within the historic district who do renovations or work in compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards, is that correct?
If you're referring to the $100,000 historic preservation grant, correct. Obviously, the other funds for grants are for eligible projects within the entire RDA district.
Okay, so all we're doing is apportioning the money that comes into the RDA, we're not adding to that?
That is correct. These are the funds that we're receiving on an annual basis through the RDA. These are funds collected through the properties that are within the RDA district.
Okay. Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I wanted to share my experience that as someone who rides on that trail, the fact that right now you have to cut over somewhere onto industrial and know where to hook up onto Veterans or Yucca in order to get into town, and that there's no signage, and that it would, it's real easy just to sort of bypass, you know, to get on towards the lake and then completely bypass Boulder City. I think it's a wonderful idea to have, and a shelter, because I know there are places in Henderson where you can ride, and there are other places where there are, there is a little shelter, there's a place where you can repair your bike, those little stands with all the different tools hanging from them, a water fountain, that you really don't experience that in Boulder City right now, that it's... There's a place where you can repair your bike, those little stands with all the different tools hanging from them, a water fountain, that you really don't experience that in Boulder City right now. That it's just sort of, it can easily look like an I-11 experience where you're just getting on and getting off and not knowing where, how to connect into the city. I think that's a loss that, that I've experienced, having to walk my bike over the rocks in order to get onto Industrial and decide which way to have to go to get back on the, on the trail. That's it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Folden?
Thank you. I'm, without a map and not really knowing the exact location we're talking about, my concern is that there's no parking in that area, which I assume that you're talking about. So we're having a trailhead where there's no place for people to come and park and then start, unless you went up further past, I'm assuming, the animal shelter and parked in the parking lot up there, unless you're talking about that area, but I don't think you are.
No, this is further west. So it's west of the Veterans Home. It's where Veterans Drive terminates. There is a gravel parking area for a local feature of rocks that is located there. But certainly, probably one of the primary objectives of the trailhead is not so much for people as a starting point, but it's for people who are unfamiliar with Boulder City and all the benefits here, to divert them through panels that talk about the history of our community, panels that highlight linkages to our local trails, and help to draw them into our community and our downtown.
So my thought would be to start out with places where people are already congregating. So for instance, Bootleg Canyon and, I'm not sure what it's called, but the Sculpture Park north of the animal shelter that has trails up there where people are parking, directing, having maps available at those locations so people right at the start can decide and see what's available to them. Just as a newbie to Boulder City, when I went up there, I didn't even know how to get to some of the main spots because there is no mapping system there. If you go up to Bootleg Canyon, and I don't know who maintains these, but there are bulletin boards up there that have year-old posters that are wrinkled from the rain. So I think we do have some sources that we have not used. And I would, before, start building more things to use the things that are already in place and start dragging people where they're already congregating. Along the, I do understand, you know, when you're on the trail itself to have some mapage. But this is, I have a concern about having places where people might start congregating in the desert. So that's just my thought on that.
Well, and a couple of responses to that, Councilwoman Folden, is that we can certainly look at other interpretive signage opportunities elsewhere within the community. One of the reasons we can use RDA funds in this location, it is within the RDA district, so it's an eligible project. In addition to that, the trail is already there and is being used by people, many people outside of the community. And so, this is a chance to divert them from the trail into Boulder City versus continuing on to Lake Mead and into Henderson.
Right. I just think that we should start with having signage where people are already starting from, and those other two locations first, where we already have bulletin boards and things that we could utilize that we're not. That's just my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I mean, I understand why we would, why, you know, the point of this is not where people are congregating to start the trail, but maybe where they're getting off and to hopefully come into Boulder City. What is the function, though, of the shelter? I see $100,000 for a trailhead shelter. What is the function of that?
It is to provide shade for people that are traveling on the River Mountain Loop Trail. It's to help encourage them to stop with the water fountain and the interpretive signage. This would help to shelter some of the signage. And obviously, during warmer days during the summer, they're more likely to stop if they have someplace to shelter at.
And then, so we could have, like you said, we have a water fountain there. We have some signage. Councilwoman Bridges mentioned the potential of a setup so people can, if they need to tune up their bike or something like that, they experience something while on the trail. I mean, that, to me, that makes sense. I understand the concern here. My only concern is, why is it $100,000? I'm looking at this, and it looks like, you know, something you could, I mean, I'm not saying that it's not engineered really well and worth it, but, you know, it seems like something, you know, some Boy Scouts could build, you know, for one of their merit badges. It looks like a rather simple structure. I mean, obviously, it's probably metal, not wood, and all that sort of stuff. But I just, that's where my concern is, because it looks great. But then I look at the price tag, and I go, "Wow, that's a lot of money for something so simple." So I'm, you know, I guess I'm a little, that's where I, my wires start to cross a little bit. But I believe it's, it's, it's a good idea to have this, this point for people to come off. I mean, that's one of the things that we want to, you know, what we've talked about doing is becoming more of an adventure destination. People who are riding, using the recreation of this area. It's one of the benefits that Boulder City has that not a lot of other places have. So I see it, but then I see the price tag. That's where, you know, I get a little hesitant. But I think it's, you know, wonderful, great ideas, but not all, not all wonderful, great ideas deserve the priority. So that's, that's where I'm at. I think it's, I do think it's a good start for us, though.
And Councilman Adams, the point of clarification, it's not $100,000 just for this structure. So in the EVC's plan, they have a more basic shelter. In our plans for the Complete Streets Project, we have more basic shelters. This additional $100,000 allows for this concept that was up on the screen that is more tied to the history of the community and to the railroad museum. And it allows us not only to place the shelter at the trailhead, but to have matching shelters along Boulder City Parkway with the Complete Streets Project.
Well, that, having shelter along the Boulder City Parkway, I think, is absolute, since, especially since we have no tree coverage there, and it's an area where people could be, you know, walking or spending time there in the, in the middle of the sun. I mean, and then if this is just one of many, that, to me, makes a lot more sense.
And of course, one of the reasons for the cost is that we're projecting out into open space, and it gets a little more expensive tying into water lines and extending water lines a few hundred feet, several hundred feet.
My understanding is that the EVC is covering most of that cost. The, like Michael had said, that there was two different proposals for these shade structures. One was just kind of a generic, smaller one. But if we want to tie it in with the history and have a match along the Parkway, that's what the additional request is for. The city is trying to see what we can do to help out with that trailhead, because they have a set dollar amount to do with the landscape improvements. They're doing kind of the railroad theme, trying to tie everything else in. So they're covering as much as they possibly can. If we can help out, they can do a little bit more and make it nicer.
Okay, so the cost is in excess of $100,000 for this particular project?
What, they have $140,000 right now? Yeah, they have $140,000 right now. We're helping cross things off the list to get it down below that $140,000. But if there's anything the city can do to help, then that means that we don't have to cross off as much.
And I get, you know, and I, I hear the comments from the other council members about how, you know, we need to do things that, that bring folks into Boulder City. And, and there's certainly some validity to that. But there's, that's a double-edged sword. It's always going to be a double-edged sword. You know, we could also say, "Well, gee, why don't we put up streetlights all along this pathway, and that way it could be used at night?" And how about some turnouts, like every 200 feet or so, so the people could do that? And let's put up some cell towers so that people will make sure when 5G comes in, they'll be able to use GPS and everything else to identify all of the great things here in Boulder City. So when we start talking about, "Well, gee, these projects are absolutely necessary," I think we need to be very careful about how we do it. And rather than taking these one-off projects like this, identify a plan of exactly what we want to see out there in the open space, instead of somebody coming up with a grant and saying, "We've got money, we're gonna do this." But I really think we need to get a plan together and not just say, "Oh, this'll bring more people," when we don't know if it will or not, and we don't know if it's desirable to develop that open space out there in that way. So I, I think we always need to be concerned about that and not just grabbing a project and saying, "Oh, this'll be wonderful." Caution is a good thing to have in mind when we're talking about our open spaces out there.
And certainly, certainly, Mayor McManus, that is an important concern. That's why this follows through with what was identified in the River Mountains Loop Trail plan that received community input, as well as the presentation by the council for consideration. The trailhead was one of the items identified in that plan.
And again, I guess it's how you go about doing that. You know, we could talk about putting a parking lot out there. We could talk about putting a campground out there. We could talk about putting showers out there. So there's all kinds of things like that that aren't really identified in the work that was done previously. What I'm saying is, we need to evaluate these things carefully so that we don't wind up with just Disneyland out there in the desert. So again, some caution is necessary. I know that there's a great eagerness to have public funds expended without regard for the amounts, because any dime we can spend on something must be good for business. But having a plan that's actually effective, I think, is an important part of these considerations. Any other questions or comments?
Could I just ask a question here? Do you want us to take that out of the budget? Is that what you're saying, or? I just...
I'm not saying that. Anyone else saying that?
I just want to make sure, so we'll leave it in for now. Okay, okay.
So for now, obviously, the budget as presented will include that. And also, keep in mind, council members, that as we go forward, if that becomes a capital project, that you will be able to weigh in in terms of scope, you know, amenities, that sort of thing. So there will be other opportunities for you to also weigh in on, on those particular projects.
Okay. So all, that summarizes all the changes for the governmental funds since our last meeting. They're also all in our executive summary, the updated one for our second workshop. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions or comments? Councilwoman Folden?
I'll start with one. Earlier on, you said that the golf, the Muni Golf Course clubhouse renovations were going to be moved out to 2025. So we already had budgeted, I think, $50,000 for renovation.
It was for the study?
For the study. Is that done or not used yet?
The, there's an architect working on a set of plans right now for the clubhouse renovation. That's what the $50,000 is for.
Okay, so we did spend that?
It's in process right now.
It's in process, okay. Okay, so I guess it's my concern when we start something and then push out the money for actually doing it, you know, we get to a point where eventually we're gonna need another set of plans, another evaluation, another study. That's just a thought on that. Yeah, I don't have anything to...
It's unique. I, that's all I can say.
Councilman Adams?
Yeah, just to follow up on something that I was kind of talking about the previous meeting when we were talking about the animal shelter and the need for an isolation room and all that sort of stuff, which I still think is great, but I do kind of, you know, as I thought more about it, you know, the most important thing is, is training and making sure that these people aren't overworked and that we have, you know, a well-educated staff, because that's going to be the, really, the deciding factor. You could have the most, you know, expensive isolation room over there and not have somebody well-trained, or they're tired and they make a mistake. And that's where those sorts of things happen. You know, you can, you know, with good ingenuity, you could really, you know, turn, you know, you can make any space into a quarantine space if you need to. But the most important part is that we are providing good training, that people aren't being overworked. So I just wanted to make sure that, that I stated that, because it's not just about having, you know, you can't just build something and say, "Perfect, now we've, now we've got it, and we don't have to worry about it." The important part is making sure that we have well-trained staff who's paid well, well-educated, trained, in order to make sure that those things work. So I just wanted to make sure I followed up on that part of it.
Anyone else? Couple of quite, well, actually, I have several questions, I'll be honest. One is, as I was looking at the amounts of revenue and expenses, it looks like we're spending more than we're taking in, in this budget. Is that correct?
For the general fund?
Yes.
When you take into capital improvements, yes. We are...
Is that magic money?
No, we, it's what we've done the last few years, though. We cover our operational costs with our incoming revenue, and the CIP projects have been paid through fund balance. So it's, it's prior year's money that's in the general fund.
We're drawing down our balance?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that there had been talk, anyway, of taking some of that money and putting it towards a pool fund in the future, right?
Um, yes, but it would be structured in a way that it's unbudgeted funds. So at the end of the year, if we had a solar lease project come on board that we didn't budget for in the beginning of the year, those monies that were never budgeted for would move towards those funds. And so, we already have it in ordinance for 10% of those funds to go to the extraordinary repair and expense fund, the VERF fund, the revenue stabilization fund, and, which one is it? Oh, the compensated absences fund. So we already have that in place. But it's not like how we're doing the budget right now, where we're actually using use of fund balance. It's not budgeted money.
But we're spending down our reserves. We're spending more than we're taking in?
This, this year, yes.
Okay, how, how long do we project to do that?
For our capital needs?
Just for our budget?
For, well, a budget's just one year. That was our needs for this year, is we had general fund projects of 3.2 million for CIP, and we had the funds in the general fund, too, to support them. So that's where we're requesting to spend the money from. We have put things in place, like the start of the new four funds, where 1% now of the solar lease revenues are going into those funds. So we are creating a savings in specific funds for revenue stabilization, extraordinary repair, compensate absences, and the fourth one, which...
It's that compensation thing?
And VERF.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, we are putting, so there is actually 4% less of the solar lease revenue that's going into the general fund, that's going into those four savings types of reserves.
And where are we at as far as fully funding those? What percentage of that is funded?
Very, because we just started the funds this year. So we just did the initial fund of, it was about $150,000 to $120,000 for each one of those. The VERF and the, well, VERF and extraordinary repairs and expenses, 10% of assets for the general fund, which is about 1.4 million. So we don't even have 100, we have like $100,000, so we're not even close to funding those at this point. And then also, the revenue stabilization is just about $150,000, so. And revenue stabilization is actually 10% of expenses, so that'd be 3.4 million. So we're nowhere near fully funding that. And VERF would be, how do I say VERF? VERF is also the 5% of...
On page 13 of the beige-colored executive summary, we have listed all of those new funds and the amount that's been currently put in them. So they're all, it's currently at zero balance. I think we had an initial $150,000 of seed money put in there, and some of that's already been used, especially the compensated absences and the extraordinary repairs. So that'll tell you what is in there right now. So those funds have to be funded in the future.
Do you know what the expense for extraordinary repairs has already been?
Um, there was, that's...
We had a rock slide?
Rock slide.
On a bike path?
No.
I can't remember the street name. But there's a, a street that runs down below an existing...
existing street, and it's a pretty steep drop-off. The rocks were falling from the street that was up above down onto the roadway down below. So some of the extraordinary funds were used to install fence so the rocks couldn't be shooting out onto the street. And then also, the guardrails being taken a look at, at the top for next year.
These funds, these four funds, they're really of different natures. Extraordinary building repairs, I mean, if we're using it for things like that, yeah, I can see where we're never going to get fully funded on something like that. On VERF, that's the vehicle replacement program, that's intended as a revolving fund. We're never going to get that to a point and say, okay, it's fully funded. That's a yearly thing that has to be funded each year as we replace vehicles, right?
We could, I mean, we have the opportunity to fund it more to 3.4, so we wouldn't have to pay as much of our operating costs. It's an option, but yeah, it's going to change every year because we're going to, someone's going to need a vehicle.
Yeah, I, as I recall, that was the whole point of that, is we know that vehicles' age require replacement, and instead of getting hit with big bills every once in a while when every vehicle in Public Works is finally broken down, we would get some type of schedule going where the vehicles would be replaced. So that fund is never going to not need money.
True.
Or we just tell all the employees they have to walk everywhere.
Be interesting.
So then we look at the compensation fund. Again, as I recall, that was created so that as employees retire or move to other positions, any leave that they have accumulated, rather than, again, a department getting hit with a big expense they didn't expect, that fund would be built up and used for payment of that accumulated leave if an employee were to leave employment.
Yes, and so it's not a big hit to that department.
Okay. So again, we can't predict when people are going to leave employment, but we can say with some certainty that that's probably going to happen on a fairly constant basis. Again, I can see where it's going to go up and down, and that's the purpose of this fund, is to allow for that to happen without having impacts on individual departments. So again, when we look at these things and we say, well, we're taking this extra money out and we're putting it into these funds, that's not a one-time cost. That's something that is going to happen on a yearly basis.
Yes, for those two, definitely.
Okay. And the others? I mean, I've actually mentioned three there.
So we talked about VERF, the extraordinary, well, we haven't talked extraordinary repair, and hopefully, we don't have emergencies where something happens and we didn't budget for it in our CIP. That's more what the extraordinary repair is for. So hopefully, we will be able to grow that. So when there is an emergency, we can use that money. And then compensated, oh, the revenue stabilization will grow, goodness, hopefully, we'll never have to use that on an annual basis.
There's that word, never, huh?
Hopefully. So I mean, that's just growing for, you know, if the economy unfortunately tanks, like we have, and our tax revenues go down, that we have a source to pay for things.
Okay. So again, a rainy day fund, if you will, but those do get spent down from time to time as the economy may change, go through cycles that it historically does go through. So again, what I'm getting at is we're already spending down our funds in the bank, right? We had funds built up in the bank, and now we're saying, well, we're not going to put as much in the bank, but we're going to take more out of the bank this year.
Yes, but currently, we are covering all our operating costs without, even with that 4% reduction.
I, the point I'm trying to make is we can't really consider these four new funds as a one-time expense or even a two- or three-year horizon expense. These are going to be constant expenses. And really, all we did was move money that normally gets spent into specified accounts and identify that as vehicle replacement, or employee compensation, or extraordinary maintenance. Those were things that were there before. They're not new.
We're just attempting to be more fiscally responsible and preparing for them.
Right. It makes it easier to see what that money is and the need for it, although if money was originally anticipated for replacing the roof on the recreation center, that looks like maintenance to me. It doesn't look like extraordinary maintenance.
So that was a unique situation where, when we went back and reviewed and we changed it, so the roof replacement could be part of extraordinary repairs and replacement?
Well, we can call anything extraordinary.
Yeah, true. There's an NRS rule that we're only allowed to use 10% of our general fund funds to pay for capital improvement and also funding the revenue stabilization. At the time, and when we suggested possibly using that $60,000 in extraordinary repair, we were worried maybe we'd get to the 10% of CIP, and so it was just a safeguard because we didn't know what other projects were coming up at that time. But now-
That's why they called it an extraordinary expense fund, right?
But now we're feeling that we'll stay under our 10% threshold so we can afford, it can stay within the 10% threshold of the general fund.
Now you just take more money out of the bank, that's all. Okay. Again, the point I'm trying to make is those funds are not going to never need money going into them. So to say, well, we're spending more this year because we created these funds and we need to fund them, we're just shifting money around. We're just making it a little clearer on what that money's for.
One big difference, though, once we put the money in these funds, it's protected from other areas. I mean, we now have money earmarked for these sort of situations that you just said occur all the time. But now we're setting aside money for it in a responsible way, whereas if the money stays in the fund balance, it is not protected and, you know, could end up being used for things that would leave us short if these situations occurred. So part of the pool pack meeting we had was, this is part of responsible budgeting, is setting aside, you can call it rainy day funds, you could call it mini savings accounts, because we know we're going to incur all these situations, and having these monies available when needed is the important part for the city of Boulder City, to keep it fiscally sound. We don't want to just have money sitting in a savings account that could be open to uses that we don't want it used for. So this actually puts it where we know we're going to need it.
We're still overspending our revenue this year.
Mayor, if I may just add a point of clarification. You know, as, as we know, Boulder City is a pay-as-go city when it comes particularly to capital expenses. We do have a capital improvement fund that pays for a certain amount of capital on a yearly basis. However, our needs are much larger than those monies that going into that fund. So any revenues in excess of those that are projected, say, for example, if taxes and consolidated taxes, property taxes, come in above what was generated, that helps to bring up the ending fund balance of the general fund. If we have other extraordinary incidences that occur throughout the year, say, sale of land and whatnot, that could potentially bring in additional revenues to the general fund, that would also increase that. So we typically do see, from one year to the next, to the next, that we do have more revenues or less expenditures that may occur, and the effect of those two, in essence, increases the unrestricted or the ending fund balances of the general fund. And so that ending fund balance above the policy of 20% is what is available to the city council to assist in funding additional capital improvement projects above and beyond what the capital improvement fund may have. So we do budget. In order to be able to move capital improvement needs forward, we budget above the revenue line by using the ending fund balance above the 20% to assist in moving those projects along. If not, the effect of that would be that many of these projects would take substantially longer period of time in order to get that done because we just would not have the capacity to be able to fund those. So yes, in practice, we are bringing down the ending fund balance, but the reality is, is that that's the way that we are designed to do, is that in order to fund these projects, we must use anything above the 20% in order to help fund and move these projects forward.
Well, there is another way of doing budgeting, and that's to look at your operating expenses and see where you can lower those if projects that have been neglected for so long are not getting done. You know, it's great to say, well, we just keep rolling along. I think it was mentioned in public comment, we don't do zero-based budgeting. We do budgeting that says, whatever was done in the past, we're just going to add to it in the future. So there are ways of not doing this overspending and still trying to get capital projects that were so long neglected completed. And one of those operating expenses, you know, I note in here, well, let me just ask you, Mr. City Manager, how many employees, whether full-time or part-time, do you intend to add to the payroll this year in this budget?
In this budget, if I remember correctly, the total number of FTEs, I think, only increases by about two. What we're doing is we're taking a animal control position that is at .8 and taking it to full-time. And if I remember correctly, I think it's the half-time, taking it to .8. Is that correct? So it's really an effect of not even a full FTE in total that would come in. And then the second one, if I remember correctly, is in the community development department, which the proposal is, is to bring in the contract dollars that are currently being expended to help fund a full-time building official. Is that correct? And so those are the only changes in the total FTE count. Today, you did hear from the new fire chief that it is not a change in FTE, but basically a different category or classification of, instead of having two additional fire captains, it would be a deputy chief and a financial analyst, a non-fire position, it'd be a submitted position that would, in essence, replace those two fire captain positions.
So we would need a resolution then, approving of these new positions and the elimination of the others?
That would be part of this budget approval process. So in May, there's a series of actions that the council would approve, and one of them is the staffing pattern and any job description changes, substantial changes. That will be part of that approval process.
Okay. As I was reviewing this information, though, I did see the addition of another part-time person in communications?
No, there's not a, there is a part-time person that's not currently staffed that's in communications. They worked half the year last year and went on to another position, but that position's already approved from last year, the part, the part-time position.
So we have two part-time and one full-time positions in communications?
No, we have BCTV, which we have one full-time position, and then we have communications, which is our communications manager, and we have a part-time position there, which is not currently filled.
Okay.
And that part-time position is 19 hours? Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay. You know, again, I go back just a few years. We had no one for communications. So we went from zero to 1.5 to-
Well, it's a 19-hour-a-week position, so it's a part-time, it wouldn't count for a full FTE because they don't have benefits and we are paying-
Gee, I wonder why the person may have left then, huh? Okay. Within that discussion about communications, though, there looks to be a policy change, and that is that communications will take over intergovernmental dealings. That was a policy that was specifically rejected a couple of years ago, or last year.
The policy that was rejected last year was a request to elevate that position from a manager position to a department head, and by doing that, the change of title would be communications and intergovernmental relations. The council rejected that position request, so-
Well, also, giving over that responsibility to the communications department, that particular function. For years, we've used a lobbyist who works for other small communities here in Nevada to perform that function for us. Is that correct?
We used a lobbyist to represent the city of Boulder City at the state legislature, but it still took staff, and there's a number of different staff positions or individuals that were involved in the lobbying efforts or review of legislative items that affected the city. So we consolidated those responsibilities under the communications manager. That happened last year, and as you, you know, know, since you were part of the council at the last legislative session, we took a very much more proactive approach in representing of the city, not just by the lobbyists, but also by city staff, and ensuring that the interest of Boulder City was appropriately represented at the legislature.
It's an expansion of the role.
I suppose you could see it that way, yes.
No plans to reduce or eliminate the use of the lobbyist, or is there?
No, because we still need representation there because we do not, we do not send someone there full-time during the legislative session. So the lobbyist is there to monitor what is going on on a daily basis, reports back to the city, and then we, in turn, look at that and assess whether or not we need to put resources towards, you know, either supporting or perhaps maybe even defeating a particular proposed legislative action.
Okay. I'm not in favor of the policy change that is embedded in the description that you have for the communications department. I don't know that that's a suitable policy directive for that, and it certainly is a change. And it's a change that the council previously did not accept. So I'm not agreeable with that.
I guess we're going to have to discuss exactly what policies change that you're talking about, because the only thing that was rejected-
I'm talking about, we have a public information position called a communications manager-
Correct.
-that will now become a legislative liaison. Yes or no?
Somebody does, you know, I do have to have someone monitoring the legislative, before we had a communications manager-
Which is the role of the paid lobbyist, as I, that's the way it's been in the past.
It has in terms of having boots on the ground at the legislature. Prior to having a communications manager, and I'm going to look at our city clerk, it actually falls on the city clerk and her staff to manage the day-to-day interactions between the legislative affairs individual and the city.
What Lisa's role was, is basically to have a one-person contact to kind of group together, formulate all of the bills so we all could look at them, have hyperlinks, and so she could track who responded. Because before, it was, our lobbyist would send out who she thought would be responsible for responding to a proposed legislative bill. But, and she's magnificent. Our lobbyist is very knowledgeable and has numerous connections, and she's phenomenal. But Lisa was kind of like a one-stop shop, and then she'd disperse it to who she knew those bills would apply to because she had internal knowledge of that, and then she would do the follow-up. So I always spoke on behalf of election bills and public records bills, and, you know, anybody that, that received one would speak on behalf of their department. But what Lisa did was kind of bring it all together because otherwise, maybe some people didn't respond to our lobbyist. So Lisa was kind of the con, one-stop shop for, for our lobbyist, so she wasn't sending out random emails to everybody in the city. That's really how she functioned.
Which, again, what you've just described there is a change in the job requirements or composition of the role of the communications manager that was never presented to or voted on by city council. And I believe that is the purview of city council, that as these roles for different positions may need to change within the city, that that requires- approval of City Council and not just a decision by staff to say, you know what, we're going to take this person and change their role and have them do something else. Those are policy decisions that need to come to council in a specific manner, not, not within a budget describing a change that's going to occur and say, well, you approved the budget, so you approve that policy.
I would have to take a look at the job description to see whether or not the job description did have verbiage dealing with legislative coordination. I believe there may have been some in the original job description that created that Communications Manager position, but I'd have to take a look at that.
Okay. Another portion of that is within the Communications Department to be developing a marketing strategy. I believe that was also included in the budget. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
I believe there was discussion last year or the year before about developing a marketing strategy for Boulder City, correct?
Okay, but in the budget, that role, that function, is now to be something that the Communications Department will be handling, and it appears in the budget as though that is a new responsibility or a new role for that Communications Department. And my question is, we employ an economic development coordinator as well. So again, what I'm getting at is we've seen a large proliferation of employees' functions over the past three years, and yet the roles seem to continue to grow. And I'm not sure that those are things that are being presented to council in a way that allows us to weigh in on the policies that are being determined by these changes. That's concerning to me.
Okay, I will go back and take a look at that and report back to the council.
Thank you. Another issue is, I saw within there these very broad breakdowns of budgets for the various departments. It simply is not granular enough to make decisions as we get to the bottom line, whether that's appropriate or not. So I know that there are a lot of numbers included in here, printouts that list different accounts being charged. I guess that's a possibility that, you know, I can pull up some number of Excel spreadsheets and start inputting that information for myself if I have questions. I'm just not sure it's a very efficient way to do a budget review. So I think there's a problem when we look at departments like the City Council, like the City Manager, the City Attorney, the City Clerk, what's in those budgets? The City Council budget shows a reduction of $3,300?
Yes, that's...
What did we do wrong? Why are you taking money from us?
Sorry. My initial calculation had a 3% contractual raise to all salaried employees.
Yeah, we don't get a raise, do we?
So that was the $3,300?
Okay. But then it looks like it's budgeted for us to get a substantial increase in our budget.
Travel and training.
Okay. What travel and training?
You guys are going to a lot more conferences. You guys are doing a lot more than you had in the past. Then, I mean, as a group, like I, we had to reschedule this meeting because of drought, because of conference that's coming up next week.
Mm-hmm.
So what's...
And I guess I would, I would then indicate to all of my fellow council members to take a very close look at exactly the value we're getting from this travel and training and see if maybe there isn't some other way to do that, or to look and see if maybe one council member can do that and do a training of the trainers type thing. I know it's great to, you know, oh, boy, we're going to go to a conference, but the increase in budget was how much?
I have to get the, for travel and training?
Well, I, well, again, I can't tell that it's for travel and training because it's not represented that way in this document.
I think I can respond to that.
Excuse me. In this particular document, it's not represented as far as what these expenses are.
What the increase is, if we compared it to the prior year, we could see the adjustment.
But not in this document.
Well, you could if you compared prior year to this year.
Well, actually, the other tool we have now is the Socrata online transparency, financial transparency software, which will reveal some of that information. But in the budget book...
And that would only take...
Closer. Closer. Okay. That better? The other thing is, when we ask for money to create a budget document next year, that will actually be a more...
User-friendly summary.
User-friendly, with a lot more verbiage in there and a lot more of those...
Explanations.
Explanations and additional information, which, right now, what we're doing is actually, which you see most cities and counties don't present this at this level. They usually have the document, or they have what leads into...
A higher level.
A higher level, which leads into the document. So I guess you see the sausage being made here, to put it bluntly, and I think we'll still be doing this, but we will have more of a, of a document for the council to review that will have more of that information rather than just the numbers. And that's what we want to buy the template for, and we'll also submit that to the front and ward each year, which a lot of the area governments do, and it'll be a very useful document. It'll probably reduce the size of our executive summary because executive summary is just that, but we'll actually have a lot of this information in that book, and this will be, again, a smaller document. So...
Well, I guess for right now, what I'm trying to do is work through what we have.
Right.
So were there specific requests from council members saying, I plan to do a lot more traveling this year, and therefore we want an increase in our budget, or...
So the city clerk actually handles the City Council's budget because she knows your expenditures. And do you want to... So the increases were requested from the city clerk?
Just, just...
Madam City Clerk?
So I do have a detailed spreadsheet I keep, and I'm happy to share it with all of you. But when we went into the budget, previous years had been cut when we were trying to skim the budget under a different city manager based on the history, because at the time of that council, there wasn't a lot of travel and training, you know, maybe because they just didn't have time to go to the conferences. However, because some of the council members are trying to really be involved in their committees and commissions and their boards, and they're new, I know that Councilmember Folda and Councilmember Bridges had the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities Conference, which was fantastic. And so it was increased up until the point it was at, until they slashed it when I went in front of the Finance Director and the former City Manager. So it was just kind of restored to its previous amount that wasn't getting used under the previous council. So it wasn't like so much of an increase, it was just kind of restored. Does that answer your question?
You know, again, I think when you're talking about increasing budgets for a specific group, whether it be council or not, that there needs to be some input from the group to that process. Now, if, if other council members believe that, well, I'm going to have to do six trips this year, whereas previously a council member might do one trip, well, I think that's something that needs to be discussed based on the council as a whole. And to have decisions made, oh, well, they're going to want to do this, or they're going to want to do that without having our input, I don't think that's an appropriate way to do our budget.
Well, I'm happy to share my spreadsheet with, with all of the bud, or all of the council, and you can certainly, you know, bring your comments forward at the next budget meeting. But I do have it broken down with, with notes on the past and why any changes were made. I'm not choosing it arbitrarily, like, for example, I'll increase the budget based on if there's an election, maybe we need new laptops or, or equipment for the council's budget. A lot of the things, you know, are like legal ads that I may have increased just based on the increase in the committees and what we have to, to post and that type of thing.
Well, again, I, and I appreciate that, but it all gets back to my initial comment that we simply don't have the granularity in the document that we're given here to be able to say, well, yeah, that's appropriate or that's not appropriate. Moving on to the City Attorney's budget, does your budget also include the payments to the contract attorney who handles actions at the municipal court, Mr. Gary Booker?
Yes, that's under the professional services. So that's where that amount would come from.
Okay. Now, I look back at the printouts of payments and, from 2019, and it appears the total payments to him at least under one account was somewhere around $130,000?
I don't believe that's, I think the annual's around 60.
Okay. And was it always at 60, or was that an increase this year?
No, not this year. That was an increase prior to, let's see, my predecessor was still here when that increase occurred with that city council, but it has not been increased since then, to my knowledge.
Okay. And again, there's this granularity problem that when we look at your budget, which has increased significantly from, say, four or five years ago, it's difficult to say why that is.
Yeah. And Mayor, I, I think that's a generalization to say that it's...
It is a generalization.
Yes. Because I think in the past, it has certainly been higher, and that's where that professional services ebbs and flows, because that's completely dependent upon the lawsuits that, that are against the city in any given time. And that's something that's hard to plan for, quite frankly. And so in years past, I know that there, there were budget amendments that had to occur because a lawsuit would come up and it, and it wasn't budgeted for. So the amount that's in there is a very conservative estimate of what those expenses might be over the next year. And that is based upon my determination of pending or threatened litigation. Now, it's not appropriate to talk about that during this meeting, but I'd have to, I'd be, you know, very happy to talk to any council member that may have questions about how, how I come to that figure. And there's no exact science to it because you don't know from day to day what lawsuits may arise, because it can happen at any time. So again, that's a conservative estimate based upon what is currently out there and what is pending.
Okay. And I believe that there's actually a state law that requires you to prepare a list of all pending litigation each year?
Yes, yes. And that's, yep, that's submitted and filed with the city clerk, and that happens each year. That report is actually prepared by PoolPAC. It is delivered...
I believe the law says that each city attorney or attorney for whatever the district is, whether it be district attorney, it's not the responsibility of PoolPAC, it's the responsibility of the governmental body.
If you'll let me finish, Mr. Mayor, the, the report itself comes from PoolPAC. That report is taken by me and incorporated into the report that's filed with the city clerk pursuant to Nevada law. In addition to that, with our, each year with our audit, the city attorney prepares a letter with pending or threatened litigation for purposes of the audit, and that happens on an annual basis as well.
And that's all-inclusive, then? Every pending lawsuit claim against the city is included in that report?
Within those two reports, yes. That would be all-inclusive.
Okay. And as far as trying to budget for unexpected things, a settlement against the city or something of that nature, well, I'm not sure that we should be including that within the city attorney's budget, to be honest with you. And that's, again, getting back to my point of the granularity that's included in these reports, you know, we, I believe we should have a separate risk pool, or I'm sure we could come up with some appropriate governmental name for it.
I agree with you, Mayor.
But not necessarily in your budget for that.
I agree with you in that respect, Mayor, and I, we've had those discussions with the Finance Department as well and, and with Paul, to create that exact type of fund that would, that would be funded in anticipation of, of those occurrences. So I, I agree wholeheartedly with that.
We're actually researching that now.
Thank you. And now, Mr. City Manager, your budget has actually come down since your first years, I believe, mostly because you split the Communications Department out of your budget. But you spend an awful lot of money for a two-person operation. And again, I can't see where the money is. That, that's the overarching problem here with all of these, is when I look at these budgets, I don't know what's included in there, because the granularity is simply not there. So is it possible we could get something that breaks it down a little bit further so we can determine, you know what, we're going to have to cut back on this or that expense?
Well, we can certainly provide to the council. And again, like you're saying, you're asking for granularity. It's typically, we don't go down to the pins and pencils with the council. The council approves a budget based on your policy directives. That doesn't necessarily equate to, council certainly has the option to go all the way down to that great level of granularity, but that's not typically what we do in this process. You know, we provide what as city staff that we need in order to operate and to execute the policies of the council. So we do keep it at a higher level. But all of that information is available all the way down to every penny and every line item if the council really wishes to get way down into that level. But again, you know, you know, staff's responsibility to identify, here's what we believe the requirements are across the city to, you know, to meet all of the, you know, activities in order to be able to, you know, successfully execute the policies of council. Council does need to approve the budgets, and that typically is more at a higher level, you know, and if there are specific questions, we can certainly, you know, go down into each of those, you know, to address those concerns. But I suppose I, looking at the council as a whole, is, you know, do you want, you know, down to the penny on every single line item, you know, we're talking about an extensive amount of work and, and, you know, files and paperwork that we would have to present to each of you, and probably a substantial amount of hours to explain every single line item with every staff. So in essence, I think, Mayor, what, what I think I'm hearing you say, because you, it's been said before, is, you know, if you're looking for a zero-based budgeting exercise, we can certainly do that. That takes months and months and months to basically start from ground zero and then justify every single penny that is being asked for in the budget process. As you know, in government, we don't do zero-based budgeting because it is not efficient and it doesn't really identify, you know, every single year, you know, perhaps, you know, whatever the policies are that the governing party is really trying to achieve. Can you do that every so often? Sure. But is it done every year? No, it's not.
Did I add a comment?
Not yet. You know, I, I think it's, you've misconstrued what I've said as far as wanting to know every paper, piece of paper or pencil or pen that you're using. I think there's somewhere in there that we can find something that provides not only the council but the public with information as far as what these are, instead of we have a big chunk of money and we just say three or four categories within that, that this is how we get to that figure. So I think somewhere in there, there, there's some way of doing this that is appropriate. One of those ways is, we've spoken about it before, is what's called the chart of accounts that would tie in with the use of the Socrata software. that would tie in with the use of the Socrata software.
Exactly.
To make that known to the public, what that chart of accounts is, so that if they have questions about specific expenses, they'll know which account to go look at to identify those expenses.
Right.
So that's one aspect of it. Another aspect of it is, the zero-based budgeting can certainly be done, a department at a time or an office at a time, and it may be appropriate to identify at least one and start there and start saying, you know what, we need to...instead of just adding to the budget as new demands come on, and we know that's going to happen, we know there's always going to be new demands, but we also know that some of the old demands are going to fall away after a period of time as well. So I do think that's important, that we get that. And lastly, I would say, if we're comparing ourselves to other entities where they have these high-level documents, they also have staff that works for each member of that council or commission that specializes in doing that type of analysis for them. We have an overall staff here. This Boulder City is simply not large enough to have a more extensive staff that is serving only a particular council member. So that's part of the problem, too, is that the city staff is the city staff. They are not the council's staff. They are there to assist the council as a whole, but they're not there to help each individual council member do specific research. So I just want to make sure that we're not conflating Boulder City with larger entities that have far more resources. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Mrs. Pelletier?
The executive summary does have some detail about what the functions of each department are, but what I wanted to...this isn't zero-based budgeting, but since I've been here, I've put every department director through the drill of having to justify every dollar amount in their budget. And a few people got a little upset with me, looking at the police chief, because if he couldn't explain it, we actually ended up cutting people's budgets. And it's...the process has evolved, not at zero base, because if you look at page six of the executive summary, 58% of our budget is already spoken for. It's salaries, which we don't have control over that, and the benefits. So that's 58% of the budget. Then you throw in utility services, things that we have to pay there, and we have contracts, and some of that we just discussed, a big portion of that is legal-type contracts. There's a lot of things that are fixed, but to the extent possible, since I've been here, I've actually put every director through a painful drill of having to justify every number and probably created bad feelings initially. I think we're all friends now, but it started off, you know, rather intrusive on my part, and then, of course, Angela came on board, and we were ganging up two against one with every director. So there's been some scrutiny and scrubbing of the numbers, and I think everybody feels the process has really made a better product. So I guess I wanted to add that. And again, I stress that once we have this budget software, there'll be a lot of additional information that we'll be able to put in, because we'll be able to create a visibly attractive document that will have a lot more words in there explaining specific programs and probably sections that address increases in budgets. So we do not have that yet, but we're trying to include it in this year's request, so that next year, now that we have the staffing, we'll be able to produce that document, which will hopefully shed a lot more light and information for the public and the council.
Thank you. And again, I've said it many times, I'll be happy to say it again, that the product coming out of the finance department is enormous steps ahead of where we were just two years ago. So I certainly compliment the work that you and your staff have been doing on this, because it's certainly much better. But as you just said, somebody's going to poke somebody to make sure that we do the best we possibly can on this. So just as you have gone and questioned department heads, now it's our turn. And one last thing, if you're going to beat up on Chief Shea, you need to remember, he's the one director that's armed at all times, so...
We're friends now, though, right?
That was convincing. So again, I do appreciate where we're at with these budgets. I just feel that, and it's not just for my benefit or for my questions, I get questions from the public as well. You know, why do we see this amount or that amount? And you really can't tell. I'm not saying that that's a deliberate function. There's certainly much more clarity to the budget than there has been, but questions persist, and they're going to persist until we continue improving this, and chances are, even then, we're going to get questions about how we spend people's money. Let's see, moving on from there. You had mentioned the salaries and benefits for employees, and that does amount up to, I believe it was 58% of the budget. There's mention within the budget of a study to look at compensation and roles and...
There's a class and comp study for next year.
Okay. So by approving this budget, then, we're agreeing that that study needs to be done? Again, the reason I ask that, I do feel that there are certain things within the budget that require specific discussion by the city council, and a study of this nature, I think, is one of those type of issues that shouldn't just be in the budget and the approval of the budget, so as we approve of the study. There should be a discussion about what the study's looking for, what the council may want to get out of it, without just saying, well, you approved the budget, so you approve the study.
And counsel on...Mayor and counsel, and on that particular item, as you know, that most contracts will come to the council in order to approve that. It is part of the operations of the city that on, you know, some level of frequency, typically about every five years, cities do undertake a class and comp study to ensure that we are evaluating the total compensation package for our employees and make sure that we're well within the range of, say, the competitive area that we're comparing ourselves to. In addition to that, as you're also aware, you know, we do have unions, and we do have to negotiate salaries and compensation packages from time to time. And this is the type of study that typically will assist management in determining whether or not adjustments are appropriate based on the market of what the class and comp studies indicate as we move forward. So this is a tool that is typical, that you find, that occurs on, you know, some frequency, and normally it's about every five years.
And I appreciate that. I think, though, that the point that I'm trying to make is that this type of study leads to a number of policy decisions that are required from city council. And without having input into the design of the study or the requirements of the study, that precludes us or makes it much more difficult to approach those policy questions that we need to. So if we're saying, well, you gave us the money for the study, we'll go out and get that done, without saying, no, here's what criteria we would like to have the study look at and then design the study for that and get the RFPs with the contract amounts. We seem to have a lot of these studies that have put the cart after the horse, and we get a product back that we then have questions about because the policy decisions that we're looking at, the considerations we're looking at, were not included in the study. So, you know, if we're looking for a direction, are we looking for motions, Madam City Clerk, or specific motions from this meeting?
Yes, I think the finance staff is looking for council direction on any changes you want prior to the tentative budget coming forward in April.
Well, then I would make a motion on this particular item, that it be withdrawn from the budget until such time as direction from the council regarding the compensation study can be provided to the city manager. Is there anyone who agrees with that or has other discussions about it?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
The study withdrawn from the budget?
Yes.
I guess, just to discuss it, I do understand the concern here when we talk about these big studies, because, you know, and some of it, you know, a lot of it predates me being here. I've only been here so long, but a lot of times, we get a lot of, you know, we get, like the STANTEC study, a lot of the information that we're hoping to get, not that there's not a lot of good information in there, but there is sometimes where it says, but it doesn't even cover this aspect, which is what a lot of us were hoping to see, you know, and that's...so it makes it a little bit problematic, you know. It's...there's always that idea that, well, you can create a study to get whatever type of information you get back. So I want to make sure that we're not trying to enter into something just to spend money to get the information that we're wanting to hear, you know, but, you know, that's a problem for whoever is trying to get the study. So I think it's important to have the council's input, so you can have the input from staff and council, to make sure that you are getting a product that really meets what our needs are. That's my opinion, at least on the matter.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah. First of all, what is the cost of...and just ballpark, the cost of the compensation study?
$80,000.
$80,000. And if we go ahead and leave it in the budget, would we still have the opportunity to determine any questions we might have about it or specifics that we might like to see in it before it went out to bid or before it actually went out for the study itself?
Absolutely. The council absolutely has the ability to weigh in on any additional information outside of what the staff prepares that you would like included in the RFP.
And this is a regular, every five years, you were saying that?
Generally speaking, you have a class and comp study approximately every five years. And what that does is making sure that, you know, again, that you're evaluating your salary, you know, total compensation package with the market to make sure that you remain competitive. Sometimes organizations will do it actually more frequently if they're finding that they have a high turnover rate, that people are leaving and they're, you know, during their exit, they're finding out that, you know, they're leaving for better-paying jobs, better-paying compensation packages, that sort of thing. And so these kinds of studies assist in determining where you ought to be based on job classes in terms of salary and benefits to make sure that the total compensation is competitive with the marketplace.
When was the last time we did this?
Yeah, 2012, 2013, in that timeframe.
Okay. And it's something that is required by the unions or it is...
It is not required, but it is a good practice in order to make sure that we're managing our workforce and appropriately compensating our workforce, you know, for what they're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, are you saying that it would come regardless of whether it's in the budget now or not? It would come before city council, before an RFP went out?
Absolutely. We can make that, you know, happen. You know, the council could say, you know, before you spend that money, please bring that forward for consent, council to approve. Absolutely.
And I believe that's essentially what is being said here, but Councilwoman Folda?
Actually, your motion is to take it completely out of the budget.
Correct.
And then the council would bring it back, not staff. What staff is saying is...
No, no, it's just to remove that money from the budget until it comes to council as a specific item for discussion.
Okay. And so if you took it out of the budget, then the staff would prepare an RFP with a budget augmentation request, saying, please review, please approve, in order for us to go out and prepare...
Well, if you get it done before the end of May, it can be included in next year's budget without a budget augmentation. We can add it back in prior to the end of May if it comes before council.
You could.
For discussion and potential approval.
You could add it in May, yes.
Councilwoman Folda?
I just...because, okay, so our city has done a lot of studies in the past, and I just think this is good policy just to move forward with when there is a study. Often, the studies come through as a consent agenda item, and city council does not have any input to the questions or things that are proposed to the person who's doing the study. Case in point, the STANTEC study came back with, I believe that was a budget or a consent agenda item, this wasn't before this council, but the previous council, but as a consent agenda item, that study cost nearly a half a million dollars, and there were so many things in there that I questioned why it wasn't involved, including items that were proposed in our capital improvement, uses of the buildings that were currently being used that aren't included in that study, things like that. So any studies that come forward, I think that is a good policy, that not just come through as a consent agenda item, but that council actually to discuss and weighs in on what items need to be included in that study. This is just the first one that's come forth since this council, I believe, so, but I think that's a direction that needs to move forward with studies in the future. This is just the first one.
Councilwoman Hoskins?
I totally agree with Councilwoman Folda. I think we need to have input, the council needs to have input.
Any other discussion? Councilman Adams?
Ms. Pelletier, as far as, you're our finance director, as far as this approach of pulling it now so that we can have the discussion and then adding it back in, do you think that's a sound approach? Do you think that is an okay way, since it's, you know, it all can just be added back in or...
It could be added back in, but it'd be better to just leave it in and have the discussion, and then if you don't come to agreement, then don't authorize the study, and the money just stays in the budget, and at the end of the year falls back into the general fund, because the budget is a one-year period of time. So if it doesn't get spent, that money falls back into the general fund balance. So I guess that would be my recommendation, is that you leave it in there, but then you could have a scope of work, you know, brought, discussed at meetings and, you know, see if you can come to an agreement as to which way to go on it. But taking it out and then putting it back in, it creates us having to redo all of our documents. So that's my thoughts on that. I also just want to add that I know that the budget doesn't have the granular information, but we did make an effort in that summary, again, on page 14 and 15, of highlighting all the significant changes from the prior year, which that is, in fact, the compensation study is mentioned in this document on page 14.
Yes, it's the first time I've seen it. Did you have another question, Councilman Adams? And again, you know, to use maybe an analogy that's a little bit juvenile, when your kid says, you know, I want money to go to the movies, and you say, as soon as you clean up your room, you can go to the movies. And so you don't give them the money until they clean up their room. And I think that's the point here, is the reason for my motion to withdraw this from the budget is that these studies need to be brought to council prior to money being approved for them to allow us the ability to approve it or not. And the fact that there might be some paperwork involved, I don't know how much more or less paperwork that is, because I don't know why something like this is proposed without consideration from the council prior to it being included in the budget.
One other option for the council to consider as well is that if the council's druthers are to review all RFPs before they go out, you can make that as a matter of policy. So anytime the staff prepares an RFP, all RFPs will come to you before they go out to bid. That way, the council can weigh in on any questions, concern, comments, expansion, contraction of what it is that the statement of work may or may not contain. And then ultimately, then, that way, the council will feel more confident that all RFPs are in fact being reviewed by you beforehand.
And again, that was my understanding of the process, that it's a policy... And again, that, that was my understanding of the process, that it's a policy decision on these studies, whether they're appropriate, inappropriate, what's to be studied, but I think Councilwoman Folded pointed it out, I've certainly seen where studies now get done and we're just presented with the results, so by withdrawing this from the budget, the funding for this from the budget, I believe that ensures that if the study is to go forward, I certainly think it should go forward, the council will have input to it. So is there any other discussion by council members? We have a motion then to withdraw this in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four to one for approval of that. Okay, moving on to other items, there's a, time spent within this document about what we do for our nonprofits here in Boulder City, and certainly we value that, that's part of our strategic plan. The problem that I saw on that list is it says that there's six hundred thousand dollars that go to nonprofits, I'm not sure how that is arrived at, is that money that is given to them, is it in-kind services, is it other forms of compensation, and if it is different for different nonprofits, I think it's important that we see some type of breakdown for that.
The majority of it is in-kind, the cash that is going out, if you look in your budget book for community grants, the charities that are receiving actual cash donations are listed there.
And what page is that on?
It's in your budget book?
Executive summary, page eleven outlines community grants, which is thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars that goes to emergency aid at Lindahann, and then the additional six hundred thousand at lease that we're accounting for are, in essence, equivalent value in cash, and it does list a number of nonprofit agencies that are outlined there, and the estimated cash value of that support.
So for emergency aid and Lindahann, and that is community development block grant money-
That's correct.
They get cash, but then down below, all of these other agencies, we have emergency aid listed again there, we have a number of other groups that are listed there, you know, we have the spring jamboree coming up, so we'll use that as an example, it shows ten thousand dollars, what, what is the ten thousand dollars for the spring jamboree?
Michael, do you want me to?
Well-
So-
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Spring jamboree is part of the roughly thirty-four thousand dollars as budget each year for the special event promotional grant program, five thousand is the maximum that is provided to any entity for that program, so I'm not sure of the reference to ten thousand, but what we have is broken down, the estimates for each of the grants based on past grant applications, and that's the basis for our budget request for fiscal year twenty-one.
So where's the other five grand?
In-kind.
Yes, it could, so it could be in-kind, the-
Could be?
It is.
Might be?
It is.
Okay, and by in-kind, what are we talking about, donation of-
Staff time.
-facilities?
Staff time.
Staff time being fire and police, parks and rec-
No.
-personnel?
Roger Hall, Parks and Recreation Director, the in-kind services normally goes for, for example, blocking off Colorado Street during the event, that normally costs four hundred and fifty bucks, Public Works does it on Thursday, for example, it includes cleaning of the restroom facilities, includes the park, making the park available to, to nonprofits for use of the park, in this particular instance, the Chamber of Commerce comes in and sets up a couple days before, marks the spots for all the vendors, and the city works for them, it could include electric, providing electrical power for certain sources, working through our, the vendors, that type of thing, so the combination, I believe this is a combination of actual monies allocated to the department and also, or the special event, and also the in-kind services.
Thank you for the clarification, I, I do believe though, that because of the different amounts, potentially different proportions that we're talking about between actual payments, cash payments, and in-kind services, we need to take a closer look, we need to have a better breakdown of what this is for. I know Mr. May has referred to the grant program for advertising, again, I've always been a little leery of that, as to whether we're actually helping an event get going, get some traction, draw people to Boulder City, or we're just giving these, some of these organizations five thousand dollars that they didn't have before, so I, I think we need to start taking a look at these, if they are in-kind donations, what does that mean for Public Works and Parks and Rec personnel, you know, is that requiring overtime money, is it taking away from their other duties, I'm sure by now most of that is pretty well handled, because these events have been going on for many years, but we need to take a better look at that, we have a cost here totaling six hundred thousand dollars that I don't think we have a very good handle on.
So are you requesting better clarification?
Additional information, again, I, I think it gets down to this granularity, now, do I need to know the hours that each person from Public Works devoted to this, I don't, that's not a level I need, do we need to know what the cost to Public Works was, I, I think we do. Councilwoman Hoskins?
Yes, this was one of my issues, and I'd like to see it broken down, at least dollar amounts specifically, you know, cash that went out to the different ones, because it's very questionable to me, I didn't even know we had a B.C. Tennis Foundation, but that's great that we do, but ten thousand dollars, I'd like to know-
That's in-kind, it's not cash?
That is in-kind, okay, and the Red Mountain Music Company at thirty-two thousand-
Is in-kind?
Is in-kind.
In the budget, in the budget binder, under community grants, there is a tab in there that says community grants, and it has all the money that's potentially budgeted towards community, towards the community, where we actually would either grant money or, some of these are commitments that the city has, like the senior center on an annual basis, but those dollar amounts budgeted are shown in the binder under community grants, which is about midway through the book.
I saw that, but it doesn't break it down in cash, right?
That is the cash, that is the cash portion.
That is the cash portion.
And the, and the executive summary, because people said that's all you give when I first got here, and after talking about it, we're like, no, we give a lot more, we, we, you know, give time, we give use of buildings, so what we try to do is capture the cash plus the things we do for the community to help them, to help certain nonprofits to, to succeed, so that's where we got the six hundred thousand, so it's, even though it's only three hundred and seventy-six thousand budgeted, our, our sharing of our buildings and our resources with the community that we don't charge them for, we include that on that page in the executive summary.
Okay, thank you.
Under the community development, there was some verbiage in there about the plan, the economic development plan prepared by UNLV students was to be implemented, my recollection of that presentation by those grad students was, we did not vote to have that plan implemented, we voted to accept the presentation, I expressed concerns, specific concerns I had with some of the factors that were being presented in that report as not being desirable, so I, I would just like to get some feedback on what it is that means in this budget to say that the plan is being implemented.
When it was presented to the council, there was concerns about some of the verbiage contained within the plan itself, but the council was supportive in moving forward with the action plan, the action items, those were the action items that are planned over a four-year period to implement efforts toward economic development, and I can certainly share that again with the council, that was shared as part of that presentation, but that's what the council was supportive of, making the distinction between the plan and the action items. Again, the objective of the action items is to be able to have measurable, actionable ways to implement economic development activities for the community, and we can certainly share that again.
I would appreciate it if you would, again, I want to be very careful about that, because there were some specific suggestions, recommendations, interpretations within that plan that I disagree with, not a little disagree with, a lot disagree with, and would not want to see, by again, approving the budget, saying, well, I approve of those things that I do not approve of.
Certainly, Mayor, and if you recall, the council did make some modifications to the action items, and those were reflected, again, we're following the action plan that was adopted by the council, not the contents of the study, so we will share that with the council again.
Thank you. With regard to the golf courses, you know, another factor, and again, as much as I appreciate the refinements that are being made to the whole budget process, the presentation of information, what it also entails is we get different formats, we get numbers being expressed in different ways, from meeting to meeting to meeting, one of those is the losses on the golf courses, that number seems to have moved around since we started having golf courses here in Boulder City, at times they make money, at other times they didn't make money, specifically now, it appears that the deficit for both courses combined is four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and it's projected to be four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars next year.
Yes.
Okay, there was mention at, I believe it was our last budget session, that there was some type of surcharge that had been implemented at the municipal course, but not at Boulder Creek, is that still the case?
There, Boulder Creek was implemented January first.
Okay, so there should be additional money being generated, that surcharge, it's basically a greens fee increase.
That's not included in those calculations of the four hundred thousand dollar loss, that's not including the surcharge.
Okay, because the surcharge is being dedicated to-
Capital improvement for the golf courses, and I guess it could be included, it just hasn't been.
Right, so again, it's okay for the general fund to pour a half a million dollars, almost a half a million dollars into the courses each year, but if we assert that there's a surcharge on the players for each round of golf that they play, then that money gets reserved only for the golf courses.
Yes.
Yeah. Again, it, it's great that all the other taxpayers get to provide money for the, the cheap rounds of golf, but when it comes to the golfers paying higher greens fees to cover the, the cost of the courses, that gets reserved only for the courses, so I, I'm not sure that folks who don't play golf see the logic in that, but. There are several things, and you'd mentioned already, the, the clubhouse rehabilitation project, I guess there's design work that's being done, but the work itself is being put off for five years, four years, whatever it is.
Yes, do you want to, yes, that is true.
No, he doesn't look eager to answer this question.
Yeah.
No, I, I know that there's design work going on right now, and as per these documents, the construction has been pushed out.
Okay, you know, again, when we're designing projects, things could change over four years, and I, I just hate to see design work being done, sit on the shelf for three or four, five years, and then somebody come back and go, well, this isn't going to work, so.
Mayor, I, I just want to clarify, and I'm looking both at the Pub Works Director and the Finance Director, that project was actually looking to be funded in year two, however, it was council in a prior meeting that decided to push that project out, is that not correct?
Discouraged, there is discouragement of that project.
It was a discouragement, because I don't think that that was completely understood, the way it was described to the council initially was an expansion of the clubhouse, when in reality it was actually a refurbishment of the bathrooms, because the current pavilion did not have bathrooms, and so now we have to open up the main building, you know, that sort of thing?
Yeah, two, two different projects.
I just, I just want to make sure, because I, I just know we've had some discussion about projects, and I want to make sure we're not, maybe I'm the one that's confused that.
Yeah, the discouragement was at the Boulder Creek for the expansion of the restaurant, dining room, patio, that's not this project, this project is at the municipal course, of spending, is it one point five million or one million?
A hundred and fifty thousand. Oh, are you talking, the project we're talking about right now, or are you talking about the irrigation?
No, the project for the renovations at the clubhouse at the municipal course, that money was pushed off, has just now been pushed off, that was over a million dollars, one point five or one million fifty thousand?
That's, that's, the one point five is the irrigation, it, it's not fifty thousand.
Could you say that again, Councilwoman Folda?
According, which, hopefully I have the most updated one, no, this is my, yeah, revised draft, two point, two six point one, capital improvement, it said the clubhouse, Muni clubhouse renovation is a seven hundred thousand dollar project with fifty thousand from prior years, which is current year, and starting with a hundred and fifty thousand starting in fiscal year twenty-five.
And no, I'm not referring to the irrigation projects that total up about two and a half million dollars, which again, that's not included in the four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar loss that the courses will inflict on the city this year, that, those monies are totally separate, so the millions of dollars that we're putting in there are not reflected in the losses that are incurred each year from the golf courses.
So this project cost is slated to be seven hundred thousand, and fifty thousand was spent in prior years, there's nothing slated for twenty-one, so the next amount is going out the fiscal year twenty-five, so the project sheet, which is called Muni twenty dash one oh three, I believe we have a fact sheet on that, it's not in these documents, but there is information available as to what entails that project, and why it's, why it's being suggested, but it-
So the, the hundred and fifty would be in twenty twenty-five, the rest of it would be in future years, so it is a seven hundred thousand dollar project, but not, it wouldn't, besides the stu, besides this, not the study, the, the design work, everything else would be pushed out to, starting in twenty twenty-five.
Right, because we've got millions going into the irrigation projects and all of that in these next couple of years, yeah, the point I'm trying to make about the, the golf course budgets, exactly how much do we invest in these, what, what's the return that we get from them, and I, I haven't seen an answer on that, and when we talk about the losses that we know occur just from operations- And when we talk about the losses that we know occur just from operations versus revenues, which are $436,000 this year, according to these latest figures, and then we have budgets here to pour millions more into these courses, hmm, boy.
So Mayor, if I may just interject, you're absolutely right. The golf courses are not profitable, and they are being supplemented by the general fund. In fact, to be completely transparent, as part of the utility rate study that is ongoing, one of the things that will be brought forward is the fact that the city, which includes the golf courses, we're only paying wholesale rates when it comes to water. So as we grapple with that, and, you know, if the council decides to change the policy from, you know, the previous policy that was set where the city only pays wholesale rates versus the regular rates that are published, that would add substantial cost to the golf courses, somewhere in the neighborhood of, if I remember my figures correctly, nearly a million dollars of additional costs on the golf courses for water, if they paid the rate, the commercial rate in essence, for that water. So today, the budget does show that for both golf courses, we will be running a deficit of, you know, over $400,000. If the council chooses to change the policy as far as the costs associated with water, that deficit will increase by almost a million dollars.
Well, and actually, if we're just charging the wholesale rate, you know, we're already supplementing it then, right? Because we're not charging for the delivery for...
We... The wholesale rate is being paid by the city as a whole, which includes the golf courses.
Right. Okay. Again, I think the point I'm trying to make is when we see plans for clubhouse renovations and at the municipal course, and dining room expansions at Boulder Creek, what is it that we're going to get back out of spending that money?
I can answer that question for you, Mayor and Council. We have a public asset which the previous council entered into an agreement to turn raw land into an asset for the public. Today, that asset is worth a substantial amount of money. If we do not continue to invest and maintain that public asset, that value of that public asset will significantly reduce, down to potentially just the cost of rare land, or, you know, bare land with no improvements whatsoever. So I believe that the council and staff, we have an obligation that if we have a public asset that has a certain value, that we need to maintain that value. If there is a cost differential in terms of the costs associated with maintaining the value versus, you know, not having that asset, then we need to do that analysis to determine whether or not it's beneficial for us to continue to maintain that public asset or get a better use by doing something differently. And so I will say this, Mayor, you know, as you look across the nation, more and more, golf courses, particularly golf courses owned by the government, have been closing. And the question becomes is, are we at that point today? Should we be looking at that as an option for the city of Boulder City? Just over the hill, I do know that, you know, I believe it's the city of Henderson I'm looking at, did have a municipal golf course that they have decided that, you know, it got to the point where it just wasn't feasible to continue, and so they've repurposed that, but they did capture, you know, some value back for the public in exchange for that asset. So your point is well-taken, and so if the council's druthers is that we should be looking at other options, we can certainly explore those for you.
Well, I appreciate that. And again, I think when we talk about these things as public assets, this is actually a public liability. It costs us every, money every day of every year for these courses. You know, the decision was made, I don't recall if it was last year or the year before, to go to a different model on how these courses are managed. Both courses now are being managed by the same individual or company. It does look like there have been some increases in the rounds of golf played, the revenue that's coming in, and while, you know, it's not money to say that nothing has occurred, I think it shows $17,000 increase for the municipal course, but we're losing $436,000. So $17,000 increase, that's certainly nice to have, but is it getting us anywhere close to where these are not public assets, but in fact are liabilities for the city? I certainly hope that Mr. Shaper is able to get some of the things that he's worked very hard for out there. I think he's made a very positive difference in the operations of the courses, but man, this is a great big hole every year. And you're correct, you know, the information I've seen, for some period of time, a public course a day was being closed in the United States because they had become burdens on their communities. So it certainly is something to keep in mind, but I also think what we need to keep in mind is when we're saying we're going to do things like expansions and renovations, A, is it absolutely essential for the health and safety of the public attending those? And B, is there any possibility of return on that, or are we simply enhancing the revenues that are going elsewhere? That's a question that I think we need to answer as we look at projected projects at these different facilities. Moving on to the City Hall customer service improvements, we've got, I don't know, over a million dollars in the budget for that this year as capital improvement?
It's a million dollars, yes.
Okay. I don't know what it is. I mean, I've looked at the facility study. I've seen some proposals, I guess they are, about reconfiguring the entire building, making sure City Council finds a home somewhere else. I'm very concerned about the proposals that are in there for this amount of money as not being defined well enough for me to be able to say, yes, that's what I would like to see happen to this building.
Well, we know it's, Standex, $3.4 million for all their renovations they'd want. So I know there's a workshop tonight, there's a workshop tomorrow, and it's being discussed of what the best use for this building is, and that million dollars wouldn't come near all the improvements, so...
Oh, I understand that, but that's the amount we're talking about for this year. And again, we're having our public meetings to have the public come. You know, I'm not an engineer either, so when I look at this building and I say, you know what, we're going to rip out all the interior staircases and replace them with elevators, that gives me pause, but I'm not an engineer. So again, I think it's great that we have public input. The public input might have been best served by having that held before this study was done, or at least in conjunction with it. Certainly, input from the City Council would have been appreciated on the study, but none of that happened. The money's been spent, the study was initiated, all of that occurred, and now we have a million dollars this year to make some type of changes here at City Hall that are not well-defined. So I'm kind of back to that position of being, you know what, we'll withhold the money until we have an idea of what it's for, and then we'll put it into the budget. So whether that requires we do all of this prior to the end of May, or whether we say, you know what, we're just going to wait until we get some plan that has specificity to it that allows us to make a determination to spend that kind of money, and how departments and everybody's going to get rearranged, I'm not comfortable with including a million dollars in the budget for this year to do anything until we have a much better idea of what that might be.
It would go to be for council before that million dollars was spent. The projects themselves would still be approved by council once we had...
Again, I feel a lot more comfortable when there are projects that I don't feel have gotten to the point of being considered, or not put in the budget. I feel much better that if we have a project that I have no confidence in at this point, we don't put money in the budget and say, well, we'll see what happens, and maybe it'll work out. I would much rather not have that money in the budget until we get to the point where I have some confidence in that we're not going to do something to this building, or the personnel, or everybody else involved, until we have an idea of what that is. So if that needs to be put off for another year, well, we can do that, but we can also use the budget augmentation project, process if we decide the project should move forward. Councilman Adams?
I'll just add to that, that, you know, recently, we've seen interest in another private business here in town that's interested in the Colorado Building, which was a big, you know, thing that was identified in the Standex report and part of moving things around and how we're going to, could potentially then make improvements and stuff like that. So there's a lot of moving parts that are currently happening, and so seeing, you know, with that potential, maybe possibly going away, it might change what we want to even see happening here. We do still have, we are starting the town hall meetings, so there is a lot of discussion, I think, that does still need to take place, because when we do talk about City Hall, and I understand that this would come before us, before we can make any decisions, but I think for the community's comfort, when we're talking about their building, I think it's important to start there first and then move forward once we've had that, just to give them the confidence that we're not just saying, hey, we're going to make this building better for, you know, how, what we think, and we're already securing that. You know, it's more the perception really than anything, and I think that's important for us. So I do agree that that is the appropriate way to start.
Mayor, if I may just interject, I want to just make sure that we clarify that during the initial Standex study, they did reach out to staff, they did reach out to the council, and they also held town hall meetings with the community. I know I specifically attended one in which there were just a handful of individuals, but there weren't that many at these events that were, and I don't remember if it was two or three, how many actually were held that were town hall meetings with the group, but I just want to make sure that we clarified that in fact there was that outreach during the initial assessment.
Well, could you clarify for me what the outreach to members of council was?
I'll look at our Public Works Director. I just can't remember if it was a study, a survey of sorts, you know, that helped them to identify and rank and prioritize...
Well, you said they reached out to council, meaning...
The previous council.
Well, I was on the previous council.
I know that they sent out a survey, but I don't remember if that was the council. I'm pretty sure that was to the directors, so I'm not recalling the outreach to council.
I just remember there was a survey, and I thought they had gone to the council.
Well, again, my recollection is the City Council has never had any input to this process whatsoever. That's my recollection.
And the thought process behind that, and whether it was right or wrong, was to gather options to bring forward to council. That's why we had the first workshop to discuss options. Now, tonight and tomorrow, putting a little plug in there, 6:00 PM tonight here, we're having our first workshop with the public to get even more ideas, good, bad, or indifferent, and then re-author, or re-analyze those options, and then come back to council again for another workshop. The million dollars that's in the CIP right now for City Hall is a placeholder. That's been in there for a number of years. We know there's ADA, safety, security concerns, but yeah, I agree with you, those projects have not been identified. That's why we want to have more workshops with the public, more with City Council, so we can identify specifically, okay, we need $100,000 for this ramp, we need 50,000 for this. We just don't know exactly what those are. We just know that there are ADA, safety, and security at the minimum.
Thank you. And again, I go back to the very beginning of my discussion about this. We're about $3 million over our revenues, so this money is just sitting in the bank right now, if we look at it in that term. And to say whether we spend it or budget for it, we can do that at any time. The money's sitting there in the bank. It's not money that we're having to wait for in revenue or anything else. These capital projects, at least for that $3 million amount, that's money that's in the bank already.
I want to add just the, there's the NRS that we're only allowed to spend 10% of our general fund money a year on CIP. So if we don't spend this million dollars this year, and it goes to next year, it's just, it'll take longer for us to be able to spend it on...
But a lot of the projects we're talking about are, you know, that Mr. Leto just mentioned, are not necessarily capital improvement projects.
Yes, they would be. The ramp and those things would be CIP projects.
By what definition? Is there some definition in NRS that specifies whether a project is capital improvement or not?
Our capital improvement projects happen in our Fund 30, so we move the money to our Fund 30, and that's where they're funded, and that's where the accounting happens for them, and to move any money into that other capital improvement fund, we have the limit, NRS limitation of 10%.
Well, right now, the money's sitting in the bank, so I don't...
In our general fund.
Yeah.
So there's just, there's NRS restrictions on moving that money to CIP projects. I just wanted to make you guys aware that it exists.
As an example, if it's determined that we have to spend $3 million for a project, we probably won't be able to move that money in one year. It'll probably require us to parse it out over a period of time, along with the other projects that are funded by the general fund in the capital. So this would allow us to kind of have, it was, it was, the concept is trying to save up money so that you can do the big projects. It's again, you know, all tied into the pay-as-you-go type of situation, and with the restrictions that the state puts, the NRS puts on the use of general fund balances. So it's, you know, it's not really simple, but this is the effort to have the money there when we determine what type of big-ticket items need to be done. We won't be at our hands tied, saying, okay, well, we can move X amount of dollars next year, and then we'll have to move X amount of dollars next year, and then we'll have time and the, the time and the money to do the project. So this is just kind of in anticipation of knowing we'll need those dollars, moving it in a little bit at a time to stay under the cap that the state sets for us.
Okay. I would appreciate if you can cite specifically, provide the information to the council members specifically about these restrictions. And would it be possible, then, to create a building fund, and we'll just call it the building fund, and we can spend that on buildings?
It'd be a cap. It would have to be a special revenue fund, so not...
Why not? We've created many of those.
A building fund?
No, of special funds, right? The VERF, the compensation, all these things are...
There's restrictions on them. They have to have specific revenue source, so like the 1% store lease revenue, and they also have, have to have a specific purpose, so... And it can't be used for capital improvement projects. A special revenue fund cannot be used for capital, it's in the NRS. And it's there to avoid us bypassing the 10% rule.
I would, again, I would like to understand the specifics of this. One, if we need to approach the legislature and say, you know what, we're being good stewards of our money, and when we put it in the bank every once in a while, we'd like the opportunity to spend it. I think those are the types of things the legislature might not be aware of when they write these, because most often, this type of law was written to prevent cities from going after money that might be needed elsewhere. So I would like to see what the specifics of that language are before we start saying, well, this is a placeholder. Well, again, moving it into this budget now is still a capital improvement. Is that correct or incorrect?
Moving it, if we move the million dollars, yes.
Well, what you're describing now is that anything the money is used for is a capital improvement if it's done on a building project.
Mayor, the capital project, when you were saying that you weren't sure of putting a ramp in, or whatever was a capital project, a capital project is anything that maintains or improves an asset. So that's, and it has to be over the 25,000? It has to be over 25,000. So that's why those would be considered capital projects, the 10% of the general fund and all that, that's over my head, that's NRS, yeah. all that, that's over my head, that's NRS, yeah.
And I appreciate that clarification of that, but I'm still not sure that it helps us understand exactly what it is we need to do in this case. If we're putting a million dollars into this budget for work on this building, then that appears to count against the 10% that you're referring to as a restriction.
If we were to move it out to the capital improvement fund, yes. If we were to take the million dollars out in ear market for City Hall ADA improvements, it would be part of the 10% cap.
Okay. So regardless, it's going to count against that 10% restriction? Regardless of when it's done, how it's done, where the money comes from, it's still going to count?
Well, yep, we'll always have that 10% cap, unless something changes in the legislature later.
Okay. Mr. Luttrell?
Just so I'm understanding you correctly, I think I'm on the same page, you're basically saying that, okay, we move a million dollars now, or we move 10 projects at $100,000 in six months, that's still going to be a million dollars towards that 10%.
Right. Yeah, and if you start trying to do things like that, and the state looks at it, and sometimes they're not very happy when you do things like that, so...
And just for clarification, and make sure that, that we're all understanding this correctly, so if we have a cap that's 10%, and that cap equates to City Builder City is $3 million a year, that's the maximum that you can transfer for capital projects. So if you're not transferring in year one any money, in year two, you're just capped at $3 million. But if you budgeted a million dollars this year, that million dollars can roll over and does not account, or does not count towards your cap for year two, which is $3 million. Each year, you know, assuming that the budget obviously doesn't change, is $3 million a year is your cap that you can transfer. So by doing this through the budget process, you're allocating funds for projects that could potentially either, you know you're going to do it in year two or year three, that's what you're planning for, or if you know that a budget is going to, or a project is going to exceed that $3 million cap, then you start planning to move that money prior to that in order to make sure that you have all the funds available to actually pay for that project in year four, say, for example, and it does not affect the other projects or the caps, you know, the other projects that you need to do as well, because then you have the problem of competing projects, and the only reason they're competing is because of the cap of the $3 million that you can transfer.
So we get back to, we could just create something called the Building Fund, right?
No.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that, but it doesn't have to be the City Hall Customer Service Project, which I don't get the whole customer service thing. I mean, that's usually, you know, you put in a couple of extra people or something like that, but apparently, doing a major renovation on a building is customer service, because this started out as one thing and then went way a different direction, but if we were to establish something not called the City Hall Customer Service Project, we could still put up to that $3 million in there, right?
There's the 10% cap of just total CIP for the annual. Would you feel more comfortable if it didn't say customer service and it said City Hall ADA improvements?
I would feel a lot more comfortable if it didn't refer to City Hall at all until we have some idea of what it means. So that's why I say we could just call it the ADA Building Fund, right? Because we don't have to identify a particular building, do we?
Well, we'd have to identify the project. We do submit our CIP to the state, saying how we're planning on spending our CIP funds.
For ADA improvements.
So instead of having PW 101, saying City Hall improvements, we could say Building Improvements, and as a project, not of a special fund, that would just be a project? No, and, and I'm just saying, just, instead of saying City Hall improvements, it says Building Improvements, and my guess that would, that would be too vague for council to approve that. I prefer to have more specific, but at this time, we don't because of the STANTEC study not being complete.
Well, and, and again, that, you know, this whole last 10 minutes, that's the point I've been trying to get to, is I'm not comfortable putting that money on a named project when we don't have enough information about what that named project is. So that's my objection, and if there's some way that we can do this within the NRS, I'm great with that. If there isn't some way to do that, then it's going to have to wait another year.
Would you be comfortable, then, with the ADA improvements? And we will update our fact sheet, so it's more specific to buildings that are identified from the STANTEC study, or identified, just, because there's a fact sheet for every project we have, so like more detail in our fact sheet of where those building improvements can be used. Like, they can't be used, obviously, at any city building, but it's for the purpose of making us more compliant with ADA.
Mayor, if I may just interject, you know, we are kind of now, it seems like we're kind of going around the circle.
I get that feeling, yes, I agree.
May I suggest, Mayor, that, you know, you and the council, you know, make a motion, if you want the million dollars in, we'll leave it in. If you want to take it out, we'll take it out. You know, because really, you know, we've had the discussion, we can provide you the NRS quotes, and, you know, we can come back in May if, you know, before, you know, the final approval, if you want to keep it in or not, but if, if your druthers are at this point to take it out, and the council agrees, then let's do that.
Well, and I, I think there's one other thing, too, is we do have to have a budget approved and submitted, but if, let's say, next February, we decided, you know what, we now have enough information, we're going to amend the budget, and we're going to do that, is there any problem with doing that?
There is not, except for if you have other projects that you identified in the CIP, and the amount of money that you need now exceeds the cap, then that limits the totality of what you can spend. Now, in practicality, you're not going to spend the total amount, you say a million dollars or whatnot, in the same fiscal year, if you started in February. What really is going to happen is you're going to spend a portion in that fiscal year, and the rest of it will go into the following fiscal year. So we would, in essence, budget appropriately and try to keep under the cap, you know, so that we could move the project forward.
But again, as has been stated earlier, that's all that's necessary to stay under the $3 million cap, is that during a year, we budget that money, not spend it, but budget it.
That's correct.
So until we have a project we're comfortable with, we actually have about 15 months here that we could get a project we're comfortable with, if we do that, and then budget the money.
It's, it's budgeted, and then we actually transfer the money into those funds, so that there is a, an action that takes place after the budget approval. So we budget a million, and then come July 1, there's a transfer, or sometime during the fiscal year, there's a transfer from the general fund to, you know, the capital improvement, wherever that, that is going to be spent out of, you know, whatever that specific project line item is.
Then I believe we have ample information to say, this item could be removed from the budget at this time, and once we have more clarity, we can make a decision whether to put it in the budget within this budget cycle, so that it has no other impact on the $3 million capital improvement cap.
I'm looking at my Public Works Director, my Finance Director, because currently, I don't know what the total amount of CIP projects being, I just don't remember the number for next year, which would obviously include this million dollars.
So right now, from the general fund, it's 3.2 million dollars?
So we're right almost at the 10%. So by removing this, it doesn't affect this next year coming up. However, the year after, if we have more than 3.3 million of transfers, then that would limit us in our ability, because now we've, in essence, by not approving this now, it limits your ability to roll that forward, and, and could potentially affect the cap of either this project or any future projects, the funding of that.
Okay. Questions by any other members of council?
I'll just say to that, to that point, I would be more comfortable with moving forward with that item still in there if it was more specific to being ADA accessibility improvements. That would be my comfort level, to move forward with that.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I too, I was thinking about accessibility improvements, because it looks like the general, the general idea is accessibility, accessibility to services, accessibility to buildings, whether ADA, or simply, you know, whether they were ADA required, or simply to make the delivery of service more convenient or easier to access for our residents. So it could be, is there a way that a fact sheet could look like accessibility improvements in general?
Yes.
Enough to qualify for that set aside for the year?
Yes.
Anyone else? I would just respond to that, that it's all well and good to say that, oh, we're doing this because we're going to make services more accessible to the public, when the appearance is that that's not what it's doing, because the departments that would still be here, the personnel that would still be here, are not the personnel that are most often dealt with by the public, and certainly, they would still have no access to those people. So to say that all of this is being done so that we can provide better service to the public, I, I'm not terribly comfortable with that description either. When I look at the proposal that was in the STANTEC report, I don't see how that's making things more accessible to the public. I know there was discussions about having a, a person downstairs who would be able to direct people where to go, you know, we already have now placed a security guard in the stairwell or at the stairwell. Yeah, I, I just get real concerned about calling things improvements in customer service when I don't see how that's going to occur. So again, I'm, I'm for removing this money at this time. We have more than a year to get additional answers on what type of plans there are for this building, and I think that's ample time to make these changes without running up against any NRS restrictions or any of that. So I'll make a motion to remove the million dollars from the project. It may get added in later in this year, but at this time, I'll move to have that project removed from the budget, and it would look for a second.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries 3-2. With regard to the utility fund...
Can I, okay, are we going to number two now? Like Agenda Item Number Two? Utility, sorry.
I'm not done.
Oh, okay.
I told you, I had some questions.
Oh, okay.
Utilities, there's a statement in there about non-cash fund adjustments required by NRS, GASB, and GAAP, with regard to the million-dollar charge for depreciation that's being applied each year to the utilities.
Yes. Wait, what's, is, was there a question?
There will be.
Oh, okay.
One, I don't see how we are debiting our revenues with depreciation. I do understand that that's a cost that needs to be applied against the assets of the fund, but not against the actual revenues for the fund. So what I would ask for is, again, please send to me, and I, possibly the other members of council, that specifically addresses the NRS, the GASB, and the GAAP restrictions or requirements regarding this depreciation cost being applied to revenues, rather than just against the assets of the fund, because what it appears to do is leave us with the appearance that there's a million dollars less in the utilities than there should be, because that money never goes out of that account, and the reason it doesn't is you don't pay money for depreciation, it's a charge against assets.
Yes. It's worth less now, though. It is.
Which is a decrement in the asset value of that, but not a decrement to the revenues available. So I know we've gone over this before, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it again. I'm just asking that you provide that, the specific provisions that you're referring to that require this to be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
What? For one, yes. Can we...
I'm working my way towards the end here.
Um, okay. Are we, okay.
There's been word about the utility mailer being eliminated as a way of saving money?
That would be in utilities.
I, I believe that's where I'm at right now.
Okay. Can I, can I move to Agenda Item Number Two? Because one, the first agenda was supposed to just be governmental.
Okay. We will then, any other questions then on Item Number One regarding general fund or other governmental fund changes?
I don't, but I do need to make the comment that I do have to leave at noon, because I am reading to students today for Read Week, Nevada Read Weeks.
Thank you. Well, I think we're probably going to push to end this quickly here. Receive a presentation then on proprietary funds and maintenance budgets, changes, and provide staff with direction.
Okay. So since we met in February, there was actually no changes in the enterprise budgets. The only thing we did make a change on was our executive summary to try to make depreciation clearer. Again, so I know I've, depreciation's been a really fun subject. Depreciation is required to be included in the proprietary funds as the cost of the purchase of the capital assets, and it's a match cost principle to appropriate the period cost of the capital asset and the amount of the asset being used for that year. Depreciation is a non-cash line item, so you, when you see it as net income or loss on a budget, it does not represent that the fund's cash balance, or even the, is, doesn't change the cash balance, or even change cash balance. So depreciation has nothing to do with cash. So one thing we did try to do in your executive summary, if you have your proprietary one, and you look on Page 11 for water, prior, we had just all revenues less all expenses, and then the total budget of 13 million. So to try to make it clear, we've had, we've changed it so it's operating revenues less operating expenses, capital improvement, and then down the bottom's the non-cash adjustments, which is amortization and depreciation. So that is kind of our attempt to make it clear to the public and more understandable that it is a non-cash, it is a change in the fund balance, and we do have to include it per NRS and for Department of Taxation, but we're just trying to make it clear for everyone to understand it. And that really is my whole presentation, because there really was no changes since the February meeting for the proprietary funds.
And again, I would just restate my request to get the specific provisions referenced, NRS, GASB, and GAAP. Any other questions or comments? I still want the utility mailer.
Okay. Oh, so now it's just, it can still come in, it's just an option, we have a different, a new contract of cutting costs if we wanted to, it's just an option that's out there. It doesn't mean we have to.
I think it's an important source of information for the community. Councilman Adams?
I would just like to add to that, that I do believe that it is a very important piece of accessibility for information for the community. I know there's a lot of, of other great ways to access that information online, all that sort of stuff, you know, I'm, I'm in the promotion game, I know how good a flyer is. I, that's how you get information to people. I think it's really important. Does it have to be in there every single month? If there's not, you know, if there's nothing to, to, to provide the information about, maybe not necessarily, if that saves a couple of pennies, sure, but, you know, there oftentimes is information that needs to get out to residents, and this is one pretty much guaranteed way that they at least have access to that. So I think it's important we keep that.
Councilwoman Oskens?
Yes, I'd like to concur with that, because there are a lot of older people who don't get online, and it's very good information, and they actually look forward to getting their bill, believe it or not. Thank you.
With the airport fund, looking through that, this is another proprietary fund. With the Airport Fund, looking through that, this is another proprietary fund. I don't see any money in there for maintenance or things like that. It doesn't look like there's any money available for that. It's a concern in this case that the Airport Fund has been stated to be an enterprise fund. As I mentioned earlier with the golf courses, if there's no money, then that means the general fund has to pay the money. In other words, if they don't generate enough revenue on their own, then the general fund has to do that. And my concern about the Airport Fund is there's not enough revenue there to take care of what needs to be taken care of on that airfield. And we need to look very carefully about the revenues that are potentially available down there, so that it is truly an enterprise fund that is self-supporting and not just another big black hole waiting out there in the budget to have some expenses pop up that are likely to happen at some point in the future, and all of a sudden, we have to put off something else around town so that we can take care of the airport. So that's my comment on the Airport Fund. Any other questions or comments?
Can I add to the airport that it is currently self-sustaining and the general fund is not supporting the airport at this?
Well, I understand that, but there's no money being built up in that fund to take care of the airfield itself. It just goes along year to year, hoping that we don't have to spend any money down there.
They do have the FAA grant, which is 92.75% that will help them pay for it. So I agree. I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying they do have other sources of revenue that no one else in the city has access to.
Yeah, and the FAA is not terribly keen on paying for maintenance. They'll help you with a lot of projects, but that's not their main focus, is helping us maintain the airfield itself.
I agree.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on proprietary funds?
Okay.
Okay. Move to Item Number Three then, Presentation on Capital Improvement Project Changes Since the Tentative Approval in November.
So how I said there wasn't any changes in the proprietary fund since February, there isn't. The only change is since November, when you guys tentatively approved it, there was $85,000 in the voter-approved CIP money that wasn't allocated yet to a project, and it's been allocated now. When you saw the booklets in February, it was already allocated. That's why I didn't bring it up earlier. But just, so Carol Ellis is actually the new CIP Coordinator, and she's going to present on the CIP changes. I just wanted to add that disclaimer.
Thank you.
So I'm a new face to the position, but not to City Hall or the town. I'm going to address the changes to the CIP since the tentative approval on 11/12/2020. First one is general funding was reduced by $90,000 net. That included $150,000 for the Muni Golf Course Clubhouse remodel that we've already addressed extensively. It was moved to fiscal year '25, and that was a subtraction. An addition was $60,000 for the Rex Center Flat Roof that was moved from extraordinary maintenance to the general fund, and that made the $90,000 net. The next one was the RDA Increased Capital Improvement Project by $100,000. We've also discussed that extensively on the B.C. Parkway Complete Street and Trailhead Street furniture, as Mr. May's addressed earlier. The VERF decreased $103,000 from the original estimate, and that decrease was strictly to finalizing the numbers through additional VERF meetings. The last one is the Muni Court Special Fund, $35,000 to replace, and it's not an X-ray machine, it's a metal detector, and that will come from the Muni Court Special Fund, not from the general fund. A final comment is the last CIP booklet had $60,000 for the CDBG, and the current book, you'll notice it changed to $632,000, and that is due to updated cost figures from Mr. May's doing additional research. So is there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions regarding the capital improvements? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will bring us then to our last public comment period. Each person has up to five minutes to speak, and this may be on any subject. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Seeing none then, we will go ahead and close public comment and meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your assistance.